Hi, everybody. Welcome. I'm so glad to see such a big turnout. As you all know, my name is Margaret McAiston and I'm your council member for District 2. I just want to welcome you and to say a few sort of ground -- format, ground rules that we've agreed to with the League of Women Voters. Okay? So, I want to remind everybody that this is beginning at 6:30, it's ending at 8 o'clock, and the candidates, I think, will be around after for about half an hour or so if you all want to chit chat with the candidates. There's going to be no intermission. Please silence your electronic devices and no applause, please. We're really trying to do this as an informational forum, not as a contest of who has more fans. So if we could be respectful and quiet and allow the candidates the time to respond to the questions. Most of you know there is one restroom to the back of the room and there are restrooms out in the library. I do want to mention before I -- before we begin, I want to recognize my predecessor who is here, council member who represented the district for 12 years. Please, Paul, please stand and be recognized. Thanks, Paul. All right. So, right now, I'm going to ask, let's see, did I forget anything? I don't think so. Okay, I'm going to ask Aleah Silva to come up and lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Please place your right hand on your heart as you join me in the pledge of allegiance. Ready? Begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. I also want to mention to just give a quick thanks to all of the candidates for agreeing to participate in this forum. I think it's a great service for District 2 to be able to see you all at once. So, at this time, we'll begin with the League of Women Voters. This forum is moderated by the League of Women Voters and I'd like to introduce to you the president of the League of Women Voters, Pat Coulter. I think most of you know the League of Women Voters is celebrating their 100th anniversary this year. We all know how we turn to the League for independent assessment of a lot of the ballot issues. So I'm so grateful that Pat was willing to do this. Thank you, Pat.
Oh, come on, you can do better than that. Let's try it again. Good evening. All right, that's what I like. Well, welcome, everyone, to the Pasadena City Council District 2 Candidate Forum. We thank Councilwoman McAiston, the candidates, and all of you for participating in this this evening. As was said, my name is Pat Coulter and I'm the president of the League of Women Voters Pasadena area, which of course includes Pasadena as one of the San Gabriel Valley communities that we serve. There are 13 all total. The League's mission is to promote informed and involved participation in our government through education and advocacy. We study and act on public policy issues, but we never endorse or support candidates or parties. We assist in forums like this one as part of our voter services program. And as Margaret gave us a shout out, this year, the League of Women Voters is turning 100 years old. So, I know we said no applause, but we could do that. We could just do that. That's the only shout out tonight, that's the only one. In March, on March 3rd, the primary, or the primary election in March 3rd, there are four candidates competing for one seat on the Pasadena City Council. This is a term of four years. Before we begin, I would like to introduce the rest of the League team. In addition to me, we have Hester Bell, who is right down front. She is our timekeeper for this evening. Hester is facing all the candidates, so she will hold up your, the paddles and keep you on track. We also have Catherine Gavsky and Valerie Jones at the table, just raise your hand. They are acting as our question sorters. So as you are completing your questions, there are runners coming around collecting those cards. They will deposit those with Catherine and Valerie. Let me now explain the rules for this forum, which have been agreed upon by all the candidates. Each candidate will have two minutes to make an opening statement about themselves and their candidacy. The candidates will be speaking in order based on numbers drawn prior to the forum. The timekeeper will keep the candidates informed of the time remaining and will raise a red card or paddle when he or her time has elapsed. Once a candidate's time is up, he or she should conclude their statement as quickly as possible. Please note that questions are sorted to combine duplicates, to broaden any that are specifically addressed to a single candidate, and to eliminate any that are an attack on a candidate. If you feel your question has been misinterpreted, please submit another question. Due to time limitations, not every question will be asked. Please feel free to discuss the issues with the candidates following the conclusion of this forum at the meet and greet that Councilwoman mentioned earlier. After the opening statements are completed, candidates will begin answering written questions. Audience members should look for the runners. Where are my runners? You see, the runners are here. If you have additional questions, look for one of these people and they will take your question because they will be circulating throughout the room. The following rules apply to all questions. Only written questions will be accepted and they must be in the form of a question and not a statement. They may be directed at one candidate or all candidates. If to one candidate, the others may also answer, but there are no rebuttals. If there are several questions on a similar issue, they may be grouped together. Questions must deal with the issues of this election. No personal references or attacks will be allowed. All written questions asked or unasked remain the property of the League of Women Voters Pasadena area. They are never distributed to the press or any third parties. Each candidate will have one minute to answer and will be tracked by the timekeeper. There will be no rebuttals. At approximately 7:50, the question period will be terminated and closing statements will begin. Each candidate will have one minute and statements will be given in reverse order from the opening statements. Remarks will conclude at that time and there will be no opportunity for rebuttal. And finally, the League's policies specify that no campaign activity, including distribution of flyers or display of T-shirts, posters, or buttons, will be allowed within this area or this forum this evening. A table is provided for literature outside or at the meet and greet that you'll do later. You will have a chance to talk individually with each candidate. I believe it's already been requested that you turn off or at least turn on to vibrate your cell phones to show respect for the candidates and other audience members. So, if that's all clear, is that all clear? All right. Then let's begin with the opening statements. And the first person to give an opening statement will be Mr. Kevin Litwin.
Thank you very much. Good evening. My name is Kevin Litwin and I first and foremost would like to, from my wife and from myself, thank Margaret, you're in the back there. I really want to thank you for your service in being our councilwoman. As I've been navigating through the city and meeting with some of the staff, some of the stories I've been hearing and the things that you've done on the job are really impressive. And as a chief operating officer of a large real estate firm, I hope that if I get the torch passing me, I can be as close to what you've done and accomplished with our city. So thank you very much, Margaret. I also want to thank the League of Women Voters. Some of the things that at least I have in common is my grandmother was born, she's the first Litwin born in this country when the 19th Amendment went to effect, and my mother also shares same name as Margaret. So I have some good company here, I think, amongst me. Also, I'd like to also add that as a chief operating officer and I have a full-time job working downtown, our brands are Joe's and Wally Parking, I'm not going to go anywhere and I need to really prepare for another 20 years of retirement. So the best I can do is this city council job. I don't have any plans going anything above that and I'm going to do everything I can and commit to that time as when I'm not at work. I also want to say that, working in downtown and living here, when I leave LA, I breathe a sigh of relief because it's nothing compared to what's going on in LA, what we have in Pasadena. And I don't want anywhere, to be anywhere near what's going on in downtown Los Angeles and I'll do my best to keep these services going to what we need to be accomplished so that Pasadena remains a good city and we can move on into the future. Lastly, I want to add that I'm going to continue to fight to make sure that our public safety is where it needs to be. As a former Marine, I give you my promise that that's going to be the biggest part of my candidacy. So thank you.
Thank you. Now to Felicia Williams.
Hi, my name is Felicia Williams. I was born and raised in Pasadena. I have a background in public policy and finance, which is very relevant for the city council. I currently advise cities on financing very large, complex projects. That's currently experience that we don't have on the city council. I also sit on the city's planning commission, where we review new development, and that's one of the big issues not only in the city but in the district. I sat on the convention center board as their treasurer. I was on the Rose Bowl Board and I was on the transportation and environmental advisory commissions as well. I'm the only district who, I'm the only candidate who's actually walked the entire district. And I did that because I wanted to make sure that my priorities came from the people. So I've been walking for about a year, I started in February, and this is what I heard, that the city lacks vision and direction, that the city should consult the community first and not last, that the city is focused on money more than they're focused on people. So these are the things that we will be discussing tonight, these are the big issues. They feed into my platform, which is homelessness, affordable housing, transparency in government and accessibility, and environmental stewardship. But there are also little things that council members deal with, and these are the things that affect our quality of life, like the pothole at Topeka and Catalina that we just got filled. We'll see how long that lasts. The safety in Jefferson Park, the trees being trimmed on Chester, and yes, even the concerts at Levitt Pavilion that have been canceled due to lack of funding. So as your council member, I will continue to work on these issues because they help us get to work on time, they give families a place to congregate and get together, and they allow us to get together as a community so we can work on solving the big problems. My name is Felicia Williams. I've heard you and I would be honored to serve as your council member. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Williams. Next is Bo Patatian.
Thank you, Pat. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for being here today. I really appreciate the fact that you took time out of your busy day to come here and listen to what we have to say and allow yourselves to be able to make a more informed decision. But before I say anything, I want to take a moment to, first of all, thank my contemporaries that are here today. Thank you, Margaret McAiston, for the incredible service that you provided for this city. It's going to be a tremendous, tremendous opportunity and an honor to fill those giant shoes of yours if and when elected. And also, I would like to take a moment to also thank my friend, Paul Little, who is here, who is the predecessor council member and is also the CEO of the Pasadena Chamber of Commerce and who has been a longtime friend and is always available to council. My name is Boas Patatian. As Pat shared, the reason why I am running is because I have a deep-seated love and respect and roots in this community. I am an immigrant to this country. My family immigrated from Beirut, Lebanon, when I was three years old in 1979, and I have lived here and I've loved this city all my life. I plan on starting a family here, I plan on retiring here, and too bad they don't have a forest lawn here because that would be buried here, too. But I do appreciate you taking the time to come out here. One thing that I do want to make clear is, with respect to all of my colleagues, what you're doing here tonight is you're hearing us out so that you can make an informed decision for yourself. And you're not necessarily electing a leader for the District 2, but you're electing a representative. There's 14,000 voters here and you have the opportunity to select one of us. And I made my pledge to you and I commit to you that you will always have access to me whenever you need, and I appreciate that. I'm out of time, sorry.
Thank you so much. Next is Trisha Keen.
Thank you and good evening. Pasadena is a special place where people really dig into the issues before deciding how to cast their votes. So thank you for being here and for getting engaged. Honestly, this is what democracy is all about. My name is Trisha Keen and I'm running to be your council member. Couple maybe fun facts about me. I moved out here from Ohio for law school, went to UCLA, and for reasons I think you can understand, I never left. I live in the aptly named bungalow heaven and I adopt rescue dogs, also run a lot, ultra marathons. I've run 50 miles, 60 miles, and in February, I'm running 100 miles, hopefully nonstop. And I'm an expert on housing and homelessness and the best qualified candidate to tackle our affordability crisis. The crisis that's forcing our seniors out of their homes and keeping our children from living in Pasadena. I'm running because Pasadena has been a leader, a place of innovation. We're home to Caltech and JPL. We've launched spacecraft to study the stars. We've placed a rover on Mars and yet somehow, we have lost that sense of progress, that sense of innovation at City Hall. As your council member, I will bring innovation back to Pasadena in the way we govern. We'll tackle our affordability crisis by incorporating affordable housing at our train stops while protecting our single-family homes. We'll get creative solutions to getting people around to create better connections for our transit system. But what we can't forget is that we need to solve homelessness. Yes, we've seen a reduction in homelessness, so we're doing something right, but we must do more. We need supportive housing with wraparound services because it works. We need prevention, it's efficient, it's effective, and most importantly, it's the right thing to do. I have the real-world experience to bring innovation back to Pasadena to get things done. I negotiated the largest voluntary contribution of affordable housing in a development project, worked with, housed our homeless neighbors by getting 154 Bedbridge Housing Project approved. And here at home on the Pasadena Planning Commission, I supported historic districts, took on McMansions, and adopted commonsense regulations to protect our community's character. So thank you.
Thank you, thank you all. And just to, I guess, follow up with that, our first group of questions is about housing and affordable housing. So let me start. This question will go first to Felicia Williams. And it is, the question is, what is your position regarding the development and multifamily housing boom in Pasadena? And how big do you feel Pasadena can grow and still maintain what makes it special and livable?
Sure. In my opinion, especially being on the planning commission and growing up in Pasadena, I think that Pasadena has hit a point where it's overdeveloped. We have, and it isn't just the general plan, people are not building within our general plan, they're exceeding that because of state density bonuses. And I think that is what has created projects that are too big and a little bit out of character for Pasadena and creating the traffic that we all experienced coming here. So what I would like to do is, and none of that housing is affordable that's being built. So that's one of the bigger problems. What I would like to do is preserve the existing affordable housing that we have, it's called naturally occurring affordable housing. So those are a lot of the units within our district. Secondly, I would like to support development that provides community benefits like good jobs or mixed income projects. And projects that are close to transit need to be tied to transit. So that's what I would do and that's my opinion on development. Thank you.
Thank you. Now on to, next would be Bo, we'll just go down and round. Bo Patatian.
This is a very, very important subject to me. Housing is the lifeblood of how a city works. If you can't provide housing, then you really don't have a revenue stream. My own, my own two brothers got priced out of Pasadena. One of the things that I would adopt is, a neighbor, I mean, great ideas are great ideas. The city of Glendale, right next to us, has this new idea that they are considering and it's called an inclusionary housing provision, which is every new development that comes into Pasadena will have 15% of its, whatever the scale or size of that development, 15% of it will automatically be directed or devoted to affordable housing. We can't keep continuing to build properties and developments that people can't afford and chase away our existing constituents or renters or leasers or whatever, what have you.
Thank you. Trisha?
Thank you. I think housing is, and housing affordability are the most critical issues facing Pasadena because they affect essentially everything else that makes our city what it is. I think the real question is, what kind of housing do we need to be building? Because we are not focusing on the missing middle. That's the housing type that houses our workforce, houses the people, houses our middle class. And that's also the type of housing that is really sensitive to the character of our community. I think we've all seen it in the duplexes that are embedded in some of our single-family neighborhoods, some of those charming bungalow courts that a lot of us are familiar with. And I think that that is something that we need to figure out as a city, how to incentivize and how to adopt our, to amend our regulations to remove any obstacles to that type of housing. So I think that's really where we need to be focusing our efforts.
And Kevin?
Well, we definitely need to have a cap on this because we are overbuilt and it's an issue with the traffic around here, everybody knows. It's getting worse and worse every day, so we keep adding more people as the infrastructure just can't support it. But for affordable housing, what I'd really like to see, if I was going to add some of that, I'd like to hit that with our city employees first. I'd like to have them have first rights into it. Most of them live outside of the town and they're trying to provide services, especially our emergency personnel. So if there's something big like an earthquake or something like that, we have to depend if they're going to be able to make it back from the sparring. So I would like to see them to get first rights, but at some point, outside of what's currently zoned, I don't think I want to see anything more. I have a single-family home residence and I live in a single-family home neighborhood. I don't want that changed at all.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Kevin. Now this next question again is on the topic of affordable housing. How would you balance Pasadena's need for affordable housing while not infringing on the benefits of us homeowners who are enjoying the value of our properties increasing? And this one will begin with Bo.
Thank you. Great question. I was reading an article a couple weeks ago, it was out of the USC Soul Price School of Public Policy, and they were tinkering around with the idea of this new silver tsunami that's coming. And it's not, it's not some distant, far-off extrapolation. It's actually, it's actually going to be meeting us here in mid-2020, and that's when most of the baby boomers are going to be passing away and their properties are going to be coming online. And it's a grim statistic, but it's coming. And one of the things that I think we should do as good stewards is make sure that we're prepared for that and provide opportunities for people to be able to finance theirs, themselves, to be able to take advantage of that. We really need to build the economic, the housing infrastructure here in Pasadena and we need to do it very quickly before we lose more residents to Glendale and Burbank.
All right, thank you. Trisha?
Thank you. I think we can build affordable housing and supportive housing in a way that respects our single-family neighborhoods and allows people to maintain the property values that they enjoy, but also recognizes that a healthy community is an economically diverse community. And we are increasingly becoming a city that is of the extremes. We have housing that is no longer affordable to many people who already live here. I mean, frankly, I think I've been priced out of my house for years now. I was lucky to buy in bungalow heaven about 15 years ago and I don't think I could do that again today. And then we are building affordable housing, but we do, as I mentioned, we need to concentrate on the middle. But we can build affordable housing and we can make housing more affordable for the entire income spectrum if we do things that are sensitive, like concentrating development or including affordable housing near our train stops. There are a lot of studies that show that people who live in affordable housing are high-transit users, so that does actually tie the affordable housing and the transit-oriented development to the transit itself. So thank you.
Thank you. Kevin?
I asked to repeat that question again.
Uh-oh, okay, yes. How would you balance Pasadena's need for affordable housing while not infringing on the benefits of us homeowners? So I'm quoting someone here, who are engaging, who are enjoying, rather, the value of our properties increasing. So it's balancing, you know, that while those people whose values are increasing feel that they are getting benefits from that.
From what I understand, around the transportation corridors, we have to build the multi-unit, multifamily complexes, which do come with the affordable housing part of it. But as prices keep skyrocketing, another thing I've always wondered is, when we were trying to buy the house, I mean, you got nine offers on these houses nowadays, right? And they're all coming in with no contingencies and all that good stuff like that. Like where the heck are all these people coming with this stuff? And then I'm starting to hear rumors that they're advertising over in China, the neighborhood over in bungalow heaven. So are people here buying these houses or are we getting forced out from outside entities? That's something I'd really like to look into and I think if you're going to buy a house here, you better live in here.
Thank you, thank you, Kevin. Felicia, do you want to comment on this one?
Yeah, sure. For affordable housing, my focus is keeping working families and especially students in Pasadena, PUSD students and their families. We have an inclusionary housing ordinance in Pasadena. We just raised the amount to 20%. All new projects must include 20% affordable housing. That has been working. Why don't we get the data and see how it's working and show that to the state to show them how this works? We've been doing this for 20 years. Where I'd like to focus is preserving what we have. It's less expensive than building new. So one example is 1070 North Lake, where the owner was paid $500,000 to improve the building and covenant it for low-income seniors. We could do that with existing buildings. We can adaptively reuse buildings like the YWCA, that's one of my big pushes, that's owned by the city, that could be used for affordable housing. And then we also need to encourage development that provides community benefits.
Thank you, Felicia. And you must be, you know, reading the cards. The next question was about the 1070 North Lake Avenue issue, so there you go. Did anyone else want to comment on that issue? The question here is, the 1070 North Lake Avenue issue, what still needs to be done to lessen the ongoing impact on the surrounding neighborhood? How do you propose halting the loss of additional affordable units in District 2 and City Y? So I think--
Is it with me?
No, I'm just saying, you mentioned the 1070 Lake property, so this is like a follow-on. That's what I meant, that you were--
Oh, okay. So should we go in order or--
No, that next question really starts with Trisha.
So is that 1070 question?
Yes.
So I think 1070 North Lake is an interesting issue because we ended up with a kind of sticky legal situation there that has been able to be, I think, navigated in a way that is returning the housing to the city for senior housing and affordable housing. But I think this goes to show that we need stronger protections when we do approve projects to make sure that we are getting what we're bargaining for. When we approve a project in the city, and as a member of the planning commission, former member of the planning commission and design commission, we had projects come through all the-- all the time that made a lot of promises about how they would support the city, how they would provide public benefits. And something that we need to make sure we do is have enforceable conditions on those projects so that we are getting the affordable housing for the time that we're anticipating, regardless of the change of ownership. And I think that's something that happened on that property that we ended up struggling with and that we hopefully have learned our lesson from.
Thank you. Kevin, would you like to comment on that?
No, I, I mean, I think it's basically, that's something I would have to rely on the current staff, the, the executive staff over in Pasadena to find out what the next steps of this thing is.
Okay. Felicia?
Sure. So the, the issue with 1070 North Lake is that the covenants expired per the loan. So there, there wasn't really much the city could do. The developer actually voluntarily agreed to do that because the neighbors came out and screamed and yelled that they wanted senior affordable housing. This is the total opposite of NIMBYs that people describe. And it's a great example of the community coming out for what's right and the city doing something creative. The city was actually really pushed into doing that by the project's attorney. So the parking issues still remain. They can lift some of the parking restrictions on Lake to help relieve some of the parking on, on Mentor until the building fully converts. This is also a concept that I'm focused on called no net loss. If we have developers tear down a building, they need to replace every unit like-for-like at the same income level, whether it's restricted or not. That should be a policy that we should have in the city going forward. The state has done general policies, but they don't protect income units that are not covenanted, but they're still below market rate and they're very affordable.
Okay. Beau?
Yeah, I'm just going to dovetail on what Tricia shared. There are a lot of projects that are being rubber stamped and green-lighted here in the city of Pasadena that need to go through a lot more scrutiny than they already are. Pasadena's a very attractive place for developers. We have the upper hand in this relationship. We make, we need to make sure that the developers play by our rules and we're not ceding ground or we are not succumbing to their interests and lining their pockets. We are in a power position here, and I think we need to exercise that more judiciously and make sure that we are getting out of the developers what we need, what needs to be gotten and not the other way around. It's, I mean, all relationships are based on reciprocity, but they need us more than we need them. So we're going to, I, I suggest that we, we squeeze or we pull out more concessions from them than we already are for the benefit of our residents.
Okay. Thank you. For this next question, we will begin with Kevin again. And it states, "The goal of creating more affordable housing often comes in conflict with the goals of historic preservation. How would you balance these two important goals and how or where does historic preservation fall on your list of priorities?"
Well, I, for historic preservation for the city of Pasadena is on the top of my priority. I don't, I don't want to see much change into the character of what our town is and starting to see glass, high-rise buildings go up around. But I'm going to go back to what I said and I mentioned earlier is that, you know, our, our city is run by a really strong executive-level staff, from the city manager on. And I can sit here and I can promise a bunch of things all day long, but there's many things that they've already vetted that I'm probably just going to end up putting my foot in my mouth on. So a lot of those things are, I have to go back and I, it's stuff that I have to, to sit down with them and find out what trials and errors that they've already accomplished at this point.
Okay. Thank you. Felicia, do you want to comment again?
Sure. So I, I'm a big supporter of landmark districts. And I think what, what is hard to see is that there are so many landmark districts in Pasadena because people are terrified that their neighborhoods will get destroyed. It's a, it's a defensive measure. And so we should really be focused on preserving those landmark districts. The example is the recent ADU, Accessory Dwelling Unit Law that came out of the state that basically overrides everything that the city has done to protect our landmark districts. So I would be in favor of really pushing against the state so that we could have our own laws here that are specific to Pasadena and what Pasadena has gone through. And I'm a big supporter of local control. I think that we, the people in Pasadena, know what's best for Pasadena, and I would really advocate for that with the state and use other cities to help do that.
Beau? Yes?
Yeah, this is a no-brainer for me. What makes Pasadena, Pasadena is the aesthetic of our city. And when that's disrupted by monstrosities or behemoths that don't necessarily fit with the aesthetic of a given neighborhood, then that's something that should be looked at even before it comes to the Planning Commission. We, we have, we have here cities and we have here neighborhoods that are historic neighborhoods, Bungalow Heaven, The Heights, and we need to make sure that whatever development comes in feels and fits with the aesthetic of, of any individual neighborhood.
Okay. Tricia?
Thank you. Obviously, historic districts are important to me. I chose very much on purpose to live in one, the first one, Bungalow Heaven. But I do think that we can accommodate affordable housing and still respect and protect our, our historic districts. I've been supportive of them. I voted for every single one that came through on the Pasadena Planning Commission when I was on the commission, but also recognize that there are areas outside of those districts, commercial corridors in particular, around our transit stations, as I've mentioned a couple of times this evening, where development can be appropriate and affordable housing can be located. And those are areas where that can be done efficiently and respectfully for the rest of the surrounding neighborhood. And I think that's how you can actually balance the protection of the historic districts and still allow for additional housing capacity to create the affordability that we need.
Thank you. Last question on housing, actually it's on homelessness. What more can the city council do to reduce homelessness in Pasadena? And this will begin with, where are we? Felicia?
Sure. So homelessness is a regional problem. And unfortunately, city of Pasadena receives most of its funds for homelessness from, for housing. That's why homelessness is located in the Housing Department and not in the Human Services Department. As we are finding more and more homelessness is an issue of mental health and substance abuse. I have three members of my family who are homeless. They all have places to live and cannot live there because of mental illness. So what I would like to do is partner with the other San Gabriel cities, and that is through the San Gabriel Valley Council of Governments. We are no longer a member now. I would like to rejoin so we can access Measure Eight's funds that we pay into with our sales tax. We get $500,000, we pay in $8 million. We should be getting more for services and mental health. Prop 63 is the other source of funding for mental health. That way we can address the immediate issue while we prepare people for housing and we continue with our continuum of care and doing work on getting people into housing, but we need to address the mental illness first.
Thank you. Beau?
Yeah, I agree. Just so we know, or we, we understand, homelessness is the symptom, not necessarily the disease. A lot, a lot of our homeless population have, have needs that are just not economic. They have mental issues that some, a surprising statistic that I've, that I've come across is 40, 40 or more percent of our current homeless population is vets of, of, of foreign theaters. This is a depressing, very, very terrible statistic. But beyond what, beyond the, the regional problem, I think in Pasadena, we have a unique opportunity because we have the resources we have. I, I, I fully support having a homeless, a homeless residential property, but I, I want to be very clear that I would want it to be away from schools, churches, and residential areas to where it doesn't, again, it doesn't interfere with the normal milieu or the aesthetic of, of our historical or residential areas. But we, we have a wealth of resources that we can use or devote to this issue. And I would leave, I would leave that, like Kevin said, to our planners who do a good job, who are at the forefront of already seeing what solutions could be utilized for this purpose.
Thank you. Tricia?
Maybe I'm an overachiever, but I believe that we can solve homelessness in Pasadena. Over 50% of the homeless, of our homeless population reported becoming homeless for the first time in the last year. And for a significant number of them, and for a significant number of homeless people throughout the region, they reported economic reasons as the reason they fell into homelessness. We have money coming from the state and federal levels for capital improvements, for building buildings and for services, all important, and we have to do all of that. But what we don't do as a city, and we rely on private organizations to do, is prevention. And prevention is the only way to stem the pipeline into homelessness. Prevention can look as simple as a couple months' rent when you do have that proverbial car, you know, car accident or medical bill that you weren't expecting. And it is actually shown to be incredibly effective. We have organizations in Pasadena, for a couple hundred thousand dollars a year, they are keeping people housed. And that creates stability. And that creates stability in our communities. So I do think that we need to focus on prevention.
Thank you. Kevin?
So I, I've met with Bill Huang on Monday, and Margaret and Paul, you guys did an amazing job with the Mars House. That, that was great. It was, it was in our district, from what I understand, and it got moved over. So the, this permanent supportive housing programs that you guys accomplished were, were really great. But you, everybody, y'all have to help me, help you, help me. We have to really start lobbying the heck out of the rest of the other levels of government because it is a mental health issue. And it's time that the county and the state really steps up and starts devoting more funds towards this because it's not, it's not going to fix itself. It, it, or just by putting up more housing. We need to be able to pull it all together. And I don't think it's a federal issue either. There's no reason why we can't figure this out from state level to county to local.
Thank you, Kevin. The next question will begin with Beau Patatian, and we are moved to traffic and transit. How will you help Pasadena to transition to more sustainable modes of transportation to reduce dependence on single occupancy cars? Beau?
Yeah, thank you. It is my understanding that the MTA is, is enhancing their public transportation daily and providing more and more services for our residents to be able to take advantage of. The problem is, we are basically reinventing the wheel so far as public transportation is concerned. We had a great infrastructure here many, many years ago. I don't know, some of you can appreciate the red line, the red car that used to go from Pasadena all the way out to the beach. But the, thanks to the tire and oil companies, they had, we had those ripped out. But I, I fully support, and whatever resources we have to devote to MTA to hyper-develop those services, I would, I would, I would support. But also, I would also see what we can do about traffic lighting. I know that that is a, is, is a big problem as far as how traffic flows in our city. So I would sit down with our planners and see if we can rework that to where there's a more constant and free flow of, of traffic here in our city.
Thank you. Tricia?
So I'd do a very simple thing first. I'd make it easier to get to the Gold Line stations. We have excellent east-west connectivity in the city. We have six Gold Line stations. Once you get to them, you can get anywhere in the region. Sometimes it is faster to drive, but you can get there without driving and worrying about parking. But we do not have good north-south connectivity. We don't have on-demand connectivity. And that is something that we could do and we could innovate as a city. Something as simple as what's called on-demand micro-transit in, in transportation circles is really simply a shuttle system that allows you as the user to call it when you need it. I think some of you might be familiar with that model now with Rideshare. But it's something that can be operated by the city and provided in a way that, that closes that first mile, last mile gap to getting to the transit system. And it's really about giving people options. We are not going to make people give up their cars, but we can make it a lot easier to choose on any given day not to use your car. I am a Gold Line rider every day. I choose not to use my car. I would like it to be a little more convenient, and I think we can work on that.
Thank you. Kevin?
That's a tough one because I hate asking people to do something I know I will not. You, you're going to rip the steering wheel out of my cold, dead hands. I love my car. And so basically, if I can find out ways to get a, a car that runs on hydrogen or some other better way that, that helps the environment, yeah, I'll do that. But, you know, we need to maybe figure out better ways on, on how to manage traffic light signals and, and the intersections, especially on Allen and, and Orange Grove. I'm not talking no-road diets, but I'm talking about doing maybe some left-turn signals or something like that. But, you know, I, I've used light rail, I've used other modes of transportation, but I'm always going to have my car.
Okay. And Felicia?
Sure. So I, I think we can do things to implement the bike transportation plan that we have, which is also pedestrian plan, active transportation. So connecting all of the roadways so we have more of a connected network in Pasadena. The, the networks aren't really connected, and so you don't have a safe way to get from one facility to another. We can also do enhanced pedestrian crossings. I'm thinking Orange Grove and Sarabena, really dangerous crossing. We need to fix that. And then also, I think we need to work with the Gold Line on improving the safety of the Gold Line. The ridership has been declining and flat, and I think a really important report came out about how women don't feel safe on the trains. And I think we really, really need to work with Metro on that. I would also put reduced parking and transit-oriented development. If you build a building next to the Gold Line, you should have reduced parking and it should be connected to the Gold Line and the residents should get free passes. And lastly, I would love to do electric buses in Pasadena because that cleans the air right where people need it the most.
Thank you. All right. Our next question will begin with Tricia, and it's also regarding traffic. In the downtown area, including Playhouse District, Lake and residential areas, there are many traffic lights that favor vehicle flow over pedestrian crossings. What is your position on improving conditions for pedestrians and bikes?
So I think some good examples of where it tends to work better are those, they're called pedestrian scramble or all-walk crossing. They're the ones where you can cross diagonally. It devotes an entire light cycle to a pedestrian. There are opportunities to do more of those throughout the old Pasadena area so that we do give equal weight to pedestrians. It also, those also tend to show that it cre, it increases traffic flow through those intersections because you don't have the pedestrian-vehicle conflict where you have somebody waiting to turn right while somebody's crossing through the crosswalk, for example, or turning left. So I think that is something that would be a pretty, you know, low-hanging fruit to take a look at, but that could appropriately balance the, the pedestrian experience and the ability to get people through Old Town, or, I'm sorry, Old Pasadena in their cars.
Thank you. Kevin?
Well, I'm sure our traffic engineers have put a lot of thought into this, but what they, they don't have a thought into is what are we going to do now that the 710 and that whole plan has been thrown out? And those areas that you're talking about are big commuter zones. And so that's, that, that's the big issue is trying to get rid of those areas and making it safer for pedestrians, whatnot like that. We have to really sit down and figure out what are we going to do about these freeways that, that end into our city and, and make it the problem and the congestion that it is. We have to come up with a plan that's not out there yet.
Thank you. Felicia?
Sure. So it's, it's funny. This is a bill that I proposed to Chris Holden last year, and it was to have an automatic pedestrian recall. So that's when the countdown goes on any light that's in downtown district. And it actually didn't go that far because there were groups like the AAA that fought it. But, but that's actually the idea that I have. If you, if you have an area near transit or downtown, you shouldn't have to press the beg button to cross the street. You should be automatically assumed that you're there so you can cross the street. That makes it safer for bikes and for pedestrians. So that's one thing I would do. They, they already do that in the Playhouse District. If you look, like on Green Street, they already have that. And then, and then the second thing that I would do is actually do more bike detection. There are cameras that are required to do bike detection on the lights, so we need to make sure that those are working properly so the lights can move smoothly. Thank you.
Thank you. And Beau?
Yeah. I'm all for businesses being recognized and being, being, you know, stopped by or, you know, frequented. But there's nothing more irritating than sitting at a traffic light when there's no one to your left, no one to your right, and you're just sitting there. And you'll be sitting there for a solid minute. I know, like Kevin said, the, the one on Allen is particularly bad. And then the artery for my district in Brigden Ranch is even worse on Hill. You'll, there's got to be a better way. I know that the, some of these things have been instituted for, for years ahead of time and, you know, businesses move in, and those business interests are important because they provide a revenue for, for, for the, for the city. But- But, uh, I think, I think, uh, we need to, need to seriously sit down with our, uh, our pla, city planners and figure out if we need to revisit those, uh, those plans to see if we can move traffic quicker and quicker. I know it's a burden on our, in, in my neighborhood.
Thank you, Bo. Uh, continuing on traffic, and speaking of Hill, what is the status, and this will go to Kevin first, what is the status and your position regarding the Hill Avenue Traffic Abatement Project?
What's my?
Yes. What is the status, is the first part of that, and what is your position regarding the Hill Avenue Traffic Abatement Project?
Yeah, I don't know. I don't, I don't know what the status of that is at the moment, so that's something I'd have to look into.
Okay, thank you. Felicia?
So my understanding of the Hill Avenue Abatement, um, project was, it's the wider double-yellow lines on Hill that they put in, along with the streetlights, and then a traffic circle, I think, up at Elizabeth. Um, the, and then the diagonal parking that they put in. So, um, most of those have been put in. The traffic circle up at Elizabeth, I think, is the next thing to be put in. I did see that in the capital improvement plan, but I don't know what the actual status is.
Thank you. Bo?
God, I'm glad Felicia and, uh, and Kevin went first on this question. I really am. Um, I don't know. I, I, I'm not familiar with it, but I am certainly willing to, uh, read up on it, and once I formulate a, once I formulate a better understanding of the project, I'm sure I'll have an opinion then, but thank you, Felicia.
Honesty is always welcome. Thank you. All right. Tricia?
Yes, my understanding of the status is similar to what you heard, and I think, but I do think it, um, gives us the opportunity to think about whether there are other similar things, other things that we could do in similar locations throughout the district to create a safer, um, safer way of traveling on our streets, and to create additional capacity for frequenting, um, our local businesses, like the, for instance, the diagonal parking that was provided, um, near the Hill and Washington intersection.
Okay, thank you. Let's move on to the environment, and the first question will go to Felicia. Would you support a ban on single-use plastic similar to the one in Berkeley?
Uh, so I, I was, uh, the chair of the Environmental Commission, and we did the ban on, on, uh, plastic bags, and so I would support a ban on single-use plastics. This also goes to a state and federal issue of consumer responsibility. Uh, so I think at the same time, we would need to push for, for, um, for producers to stop producing, like, the little clam chels, shells that we get the blueberries in at Trader Joe's. Uh, so I would, um, I would definitely support that.
Okay, thank you. Bo?
Yeah. Um, I am, I, I, I'm, I'm gonna go with the answer that I, I really have in my heart, which is, when you, we should, we should be good stewards of the environment, because we want to, not necessarily because we have to. Um, I, you know, if, it, I, I didn't, I didn't have a habit of using, uh, reusable bags, but I am now in the habit of doing that. It's not because I was made to, it's because I want to. I think doing, uh, public outreach, um, public outreach to, uh, to promote good stewardship of the envi, I'm just against forcing people to have to do something that they don't necessarily want to do.
Okay, thank you.
So I would, I would, I would, uh, stay with it.
Tricia?
So I agree that we should want to be good stewards of the environment. I also agree that sometimes we need a nudge to make our, to make us change easy habits. Um, I think we saw that with the plastic bag ban, the plastic straw ban that's happened in some cities. And I do think that there's room for us to consider additional bans on single-use plastics for just the reason that it, it can help change, um, consumer habits. I do think that one thing that we could do, and that might help create, is a market for something like a refill station, which I've seen at some stores, where you can then, you can take your household products, shampoo, soaps, you name it, and actually go and refill from bulk bins, rather than having to get a single-use plastic bottle every single time. We had that for a short period of time in Pasadena, and it was actually pretty popular, but unfortunately, the one place that had it, uh, no longer operates. Um, it was called the Arroyo Food Co-op. Um, and so I think it's something that we could do to encourage that kind of consumer behavior in the future.
Thank you. Kevin?
Yeah, no. Uh, I don't support that ban, because when, when does this stop? When, when am I going to walk into Ralph's, and, and everybody realizes most of the stuff on the shelves is in plastic or in some kind of container? So now we're just going to have a bunch of stuff sitting on shelves, and I'm going to have to show up with a, with a pan, and I'm going to have to load this up, whatever. You know what my problem is? My problem is, I don't know where the heck all the stuff is going when I put it in my blue bin. And I'm trying to figure that part out. And so I could, it could be managed on the backside. We can have plenty of plastics, all the plastics we want. Let's try to figure out how to recycle it and do it properly. Otherwise, we're just selling this over to India, and God knows what's happening to all that trash, and it's all ended up in one big pile. So we need to figure that part out. That's the thing that's really stewing me.
Thank you, Kevin. Uh, the next question, we'll start with Bo, uh, another one on the environment. What can your potential constituents do to increase environmental sustainability? What can your constituents do?
Well, they can definitely walk more often in East Washington Village and support their businesses along that business corridor. That's a good way to start. Uh, we have a, a very thriving and fledgling business district that, uh, given the opportunity to serve as your representative, I seek to develop more. That way, we don't have to go all the way down to Old Town and use our cars, use fuel. I think we have a great, uh, corridor there. Again, I thank my contemporaries, Paul Little, for initiating that, and, um, and for Margaret for, for their developing it. So the less we, the less we have, the more we support our businesses, the, in that area, the, the less we have to drive. So I would start there, start, like, like Tricia said, with the tangibles.
Mm-hmm. Thank you, Tricia.
I agree. Walking more would be great, and creating a city and neighborhoods where we have true walkability would be excellent. Um, I am so excited that there have been businesses that have opened up within walking distance of where I live, um, that, you know, that, and seeing the neighborhood really turn out to support those businesses has been, has been just honestly really inspiring. Um, I think there's a lot of other things that we can all do as individuals that really do, we have to recognize that they really do collectively make a difference. Um, you know, solar panels, electric cars, minor, things that seem minor on an individual level, like doing something to, um, have low water in your, low-water landscaping. Um, all of that kind of stuff really does cumulatively add up. I think we saw that when there was a big focus on the drought, and people really thought about their outdoor watering. We cut back our water usage, our outdoor water usage a significant amount. Um, so, and, so I do think we need to remember, individual actions actually make a big difference.
Thank you. Uh, that's Tricia. We'll go to Kevin. Yes? You're looking at me. You're next.
I was still stewing over that last question when you asked it. So I don't know what the heck. I'm going to drink out my plastic bottle right now, so what was, what was, what was the question?
The question, the question was, what can you, what can your potential constituents do to increase environmental sustainability? What can we all do? Sustainability.
Oh, sustainability. Yeah, you, you know, it's, uh, I, I think we always try to do our part when we know there's, there's tough situations during the drought. All our, everybody in my neighborhood, you know, abided by the, the watering restrictions, and it, it's just a matter of educating out to, to the folks, you know, hey, this is what we need to focus on, this is what we need to do. Um, it, at the end of the day, it's, it, people aren't going to be too res, resistant on, on some things, if it's reasonable. And, uh, and especially when you know it's, it's for a good reason.
Thank you. Felicia?
Sure. So two green tips. Uh, I don't know if you know, but the first of the year, we started composting our yard waste bins, which is great news. It's now costing twice as much to do it. So try to use some of the leaves on your property as compost, and put less into your yard waste bin. Secondly, choose green power as an option on your, uh, water and power utility bill, and that will get us to renewables faster. One thing I would like to do is bring back the annual Earth Day Festival that we've eliminated due to lack of funding. I'd like to bring that back, because these are educational moments that we could have in the community to help people and show them actually how to, uh, how to recycle their leaves on-site and do these sorts of things. We also have a, a big issue with recycling and solid waste. We need to solve that problem, and I think that's one way to bring the community together to solve that problem.
Excellent. Thank you. Um, the next question, we'll start with Tricia. It's on city finances, and I'm going to actually combine two questions. I think they will fit together. Um, do you think Pasadena is run efficiently and effectively? Explain. Are Pasadena's finance, financial resources spent appropriately? And would you emphasize spending in different ways? So that's two, a two-part question. Thank you. And we'll start with Tricia.
So I do think that we are lucky to live in a city that, for the most part, is run very efficiently and very effectively. I think it gives us the luxury of being able to try to do better. We're not solving any major problems, but we, we are able to actually dig into this and do, do even better than we're doing now. Um, and I think the, the second part of the question, if I'm remembering it correctly, is, are there other ways that we should be spending our money?
Right.
Um, I think we need to make sure that we are doing, we are budgeting in a transparent manner, that people truly understand, the people of the city truly understand how the budget allocations are made. And I think something that you will hear me harp on a lot is that we need to devote resources to things like prevention of homelessness, because that is not just a moral good, it actually has a financial benefit to the city, because it reduces impacts on all kinds of other services that we need to provide. That is something that's shown to be a really efficient use of money, that I think we need to focus on more.
Thank you. We'll go to Kevin.
Well, there's, there's definitely things we do okay and, and well, and, and stuff that I don't think we do. And, uh, one of the things I've mentioned in, in recently in a, in a guest opinion is, is in the police department, and specifically, where we're spending only 10% of our budget, uh, with the police department, when we're surrounding areas, we're spending a lot more of the, of the, of their budget into that. And I, I don't feel it's safe and secure, and I, I think with a staff of only 236 officers, it's not enough to cover for 144,000 folks, 144,000 folks that live in the city. So there, there is things that I would love to be able to sit down with when it comes time to that budgetary process, to see if we can juggle, uh, percentages around on, uh, on some of the things that we're doing.
Okay. Thank you, Felicia.
Sure. And I think overall, the city is run efficiently. We have a very high level of service. We do need more transparency, transparency, especially on the, um, sales tax that we passed. That was a lot of what I heard, that people would like to know where the money is going. Uh, on the spending side, I think that we can invest more in human beings and human capital, uh, so that we have long-term savings, um, uh, from, uh, less police, from less health impacts. So, um, one way of doing that is by, one, applying for more grants. We could get more grant funding, we're eligible for a lot of grant funding, we don't apply for grants, because we don't have the resources, and I think that's really a loss of revenue for us. Secondly, we have enterprise funds, like the convention center and the Rose Bowl, that actually can generate money, and we should leverage those more efficiently. Uh, lastly, I would propose actually doing a vacant building tax or vacant building assessment to address a lot of the nuisance properties that are here. A lot of them are in the district. And with that money, we can invest back in, in things like Levitt Pavilion and other activities that bring the community together and help us save costs in the future by investing in people.
Thank you. Bo?
So, for the most part, I think that, uh, the city does a good job as our, as the stewards of our, of our dollars here. But, uh, there's some good news, and then there's some bad news. The good news is that we have new revenue sources coming in, such as the new Kaiser Medical School, such as the new Home Depot Distribution Center that's coming. But I'm most excited about the EF Boarding School that's coming in, that's, uh, projected to, uh, bring in 975 new students, and, um, it's going to have 750 construction jobs and 500 permanent jobs, and bring in $5 million annually in local spending. But with that, we also have trouble, in the sense that, uh, with all due respect, Felicia, the, uh, Rose Bowl is an albatross. It's a money pit. We've far over-leveraged ourselves with that thing. And then beyond, beyond the Rose Bowl, uh, we also have transparency issues. I'm sure you guys, uh, know that there was millions of dollars that were fleeced from the city coffers by a gentleman who's now in jail, who was a Pasadena City employee. That happened in broad daylight, you all, and that happened under our watch. And, uh, that stuff needs to stop, and we need to be better, more careful stewards of the city's money. And I commit to you to that.
Thank you. Thank you, uh, Bo. Let's move on to schools. Um, and, uh, let's see, we have several questions on schools. Let's start with, um, please describe your involvement with Pasadena schools, and what can the city do to appropriately support the schools? Kevin, we'll start with you.
Oh, okay. Sorry. Uh, hey, just real quick, that one with the fleecing of the money, it was millions of dollars, too, that was about buried power lines. I just want to add that our councilwoman was the one that uncovered that. She was the one that questioned, why the heck is that going? So thank you, Margaret. You're the one that found that out. Now, back to the schools, uh, they, they have, they need a lot of help, I guess, and that's what I'm trying to figure out with passing Unified School District, that, you know, they have a whole separate elected group out there, and we, we need to figure out what it is that it, people don't want to send their kids there. Everybody in my neighborhood, they send them to private schools. There's, there's nobody that uses the public school system, but from what I understand, from what I hear, it's a great setup, and it's actually, it's actually a really good, a lot of good programs there. So maybe it's a PR issue, and maybe that's something that we need to focus on to get the kids to start going there.
Thank you. Felicia, your involvement in the schools, and what can the city do to appropriately support the schools?
Sure. So I'm on the board of the Pasadena Educational Foundation, and I served as principal for a day at Marshall Fundamental, and I saw the beauty and diversity and excellence that is our public schools. I also served at Cleveland as principal and at Sierra Madre Middle School, so I've seen it with my own eyes. Uh, I think the city council can support the schools, they are separate legal entities, so we need to remember that. But Measure J, uh, the funding did go to the schools, which is helping the schools. The city council can also do some land use and rezoning changes to help some of the school closures, so those properties can be used for teacher housing, for PCC student housing, for something that really helps the community. Um, lastly, the, the city can create different memorandums of understanding with the school to use their properties, and they can also pay them to use their properties as parks and other recreational facilities. Uh, my dream, again, is the YWCA. The YWCA could be used as school district headquarters, leased to the school district for a dollar, um, and that could help the school district save a lot of money and put another community use in the building to, um, then complement the school district.
Thank you. Mr. Potatian?
Yes. I have been waiting all night for this question. I am a product of Pasadena schools, I have been all my life. I am a, an administrator to a city that I, that's a little bit north of, uh, west of us, and it's Glendale Unified School District. And, um, I am very troubled at what's become of Pasadena Unified School District. Uh, I don't know if you guys know this, but there are 57 private schools in our district, i- in our, in our city. A staggering 45%, 45% of PUSD-area students do not attend PUSD schools. This is unconscionable. I don't know how long we can sustain this type of enrollment deficit. We need to do whatever we can to support our school districts. Now, Glendale Unified is doing this by innovating. They are, they're bolstering up their flag programs, which is their foreign language programs, their career and technical education programs. We need to adopt what other cities are doing and, and, uh, stop the poaching that's going on between La Cañada and Glendale and Burbank.
Okay. Thank you. Tricia?
I would like to reinforce a couple of, I think, very important points that you heard. We do need to, to figure out how to keep students in Pasadena schools. And I think one of the things that the city can do, because there are separate governance structures, so, you know, beyond raising money for Pasadena schools, which is always something that schools need, um, we can really focus our planning and land use and policies around making sure that we are protecting the people who put, who, who use the public schools. These are tenant protections, to keep students who use the public schools to be able to live in Pasadena. It's affordable housing for families who use the public, who are enrolled in the public school system. And it's reusing the, the closed school properties for school-serving uses. I think that is an excellent idea, to be able to put housing on the school properties for people who work at the schools, or teachers who are at the schools, or frankly, even students who go to the schools. So I think there's a lot that we can do from that side of the equation, to actually support the enrollment at PUSD.
Thank you. All right. We're going to move on to, still on schools, but we'll start with Felicia this time. And I'm going to, for the sake of time, try to combine a couple of questions. So, you know, you can write down the main points here, as I go through this. What is it about Pasadena schools that most needs improvement? That's the first part of the question. What metrics can be used to measure schools' performance? And then I'm going to tack on, because it was mentioned, your thoughts on school closures. And the person says, for example, Jefferson Park School. So you got those three. One is, is what the schools most need to improve, what are some metrics that can be used, and then your thoughts on school closures.
So I, I think that what we have in Pasadena is a perception gap. Our schools are actually performing very well, and we do have a lot of dual immersion programs. We have STEAM programs, and STEM programs, and ART programs. So we have a lot of those programs at our school, but that's not getting communicated to the families who are moving here. And because of, I mean, let's be honest, because of the desegregation of our schools that was forced by the courts, we have a very difficult history to contend with here in Pasadena. So we have been contending with that for 30 or 40 years, and that still continues today. But I think one thing that I would like to do, we do have Jefferson closing, so all we have is Longfellow and Marshall in my district, I would like to have a community service day at each of those schools, once a year, so it can connect our community emotionally to our local schools, and that can really help get people who move into the district to send their kids to schools that they are then emotionally connected to. So that's one of my goals, is to really bring the schools into the district and into the community.
Thank you. Beau? Do you have comments on that?
Can you give me the question, please?
Uh-oh, Beau. Okay. I tried to combine some things. The first one, the first is, what the, the schools most need to improve? You know, what's the, the most needs for a school, to schools to improve? And then, can you recommend any metrics that could be used to do that? And then your thoughts on school closure?
Well, first thing we need to do is stop this proliferation of private schools and institutions, or charters, or whatever, that is coming into our schools. I mean, the, the first step in, the first step in triaging a problem is to stop the bleeding, right? We, we're, we have already closed 10 schools in this district, and we're forecasted to close more schools. The only way we could stem that tide is to do more outreach, to bolster our, our program. We, we need, i- it's a culture change. We need, Felicia's right. In a sense, we need to do more outreach. We need to, we need to tell our, our residents how great Pasadena schools are, and all the programs. But you know, the problem is, you guys, I have a real, I have real estate friends that are in the business, and what's the first question somebody asks when they're trying to buy a property in Pasadena? First question is, how are the schools here? And if the schools are on life support, and we're projecting more and more pain coming, it's going to be very, very hard for us to bring in more people and attract new residents here.
Thank you. Tricia?
I agree, we do have a perception issue. I talked to somebody who moved into my neighborhood recently, and they told me that they started out in Altona, and when they had school-aged children, they moved to South Pasadena. And now that their kids are in college, they were able to finally move to Pasadena. And that was a story I think we've all heard a lot of times. But what's been really interesting to watch in my neighborhood, Bungalow Heaven is obviously very close to Longfellow, is every morning, all of the families that get together and walk their children to school. And what's clear is that engagement matters. So engagement by parents, engagement by families, that really makes a difference. And that, I think, is an important metric that we can use to help gauge the success of improvements to our schools. And I do think we need to be careful and think long and hard about which schools do close. I mean, if we truly don't have the enrollment to support all the schools, then we have to be honest about rightsizing the school district. But, but we need to be careful that we're not closing schools that are truly the heartbeat of that local community. So I think that, that's something that we need to take a look at.
Thank you. Kevin?
Well, I talked to somebody over in the school district, and they say, hey, you know, these have been a long time coming. There, there's less and less students out there, so these school closures are a good thing. And I gotta tell you, if, if, when Jefferson closes, if that gets replaced with a charter school, I'm gonna be livid. I'm gonna be like, okay, well, what sense does that make? If you're saying you're gonna close this school, and a charter school comes behind it. Now, if it doesn't, it doesn't. Outside of that, I couldn't tell you what kind of metrics they could use, but I, it sounds to me, the most thing that they need improved is, we all gotta go have some babies. So we can get some more kids in the class.
All right, Tr- let's go to Felicia, then. Do you have something on that? Oh, no, you did already. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm getting, I think you threw me off, Kevin. The whole baby thing kind of threw me off. Okay, sorry about that. All right, let's move on. Let's move on to cannabis. Cannabis. And the first, the first to answer this will be Beau Potatian. The question is, what is your position on the cannabis license issue?
All right. The voters have spoken, right? We have to, we have to abide by the will of the people. But we also have some autonomy on how far we reach, and what kind of accommodations we make to, to the pot shops here in our city. Now, the, the problem with, the problem with pot shops is, their overhead is so high to do business, that it actually fuels the black market for cannabis. So whatever, whatever metrics you're going to use to legitimize pot shops, in the long run, it's always going to be more cost-effective to the consumer to buy it on the street. Now, again, it, it's something that the, we, I, I, you know, the, I do the will of the voters. If the voters have spoken, we need to have, we need to have them, we need to have them. But if it, if it's going to be, if it's going to be my decision to have six or two, I'm going to try to make it as low as possible to two.
Thank you. Tricia?
So, as Beau said, the voters spoke at the state level. They spoke again at the local level, to create the licensing and permitting system that we have now. That has admittedly had some challenges. I think we are seeing the city try to work through those challenges, but we do need to make our local ordinance work. I think, as we've seen in other situations, if we don't figure out a way to make the local regulations work, we may be faced with regulations that come from elsewhere, that might not be the best fit for our city. I think we have a starting point. We should make that starting point as effective as possible, and then, you know, that way we can actually honor the will of both the local voters and the state voters.
Thank you. Kevin?
Well, I mean, it's still really illegal. I, I get it's legal here in the state, and all that good stuff like that, but it's just, it's mind-numbing to me that they want to spend all this money in suing us, and trying to bring in 250 shops, when they can be turning around and spending that money on lobbying Congress, and saying, get over it already, and make it legal, because 60-some percent of the people are saying, fine. Because once it's made legal, then it's gonna be at the State or Brothers next to the alcohol, you know? And, and at that point, then it's dealt with. But, no. One per district is what I thought it was, and that's what it needs to be. Otherwise, we're, we're in a conflict, and we're gonna be in conflict this, in a long time. And it's wreaking havoc on the banking industry, by the way, with the money laundering. So we really need the Fed to get on board.
Thank you. Felicia?
Sure. I think the voters have spoken with Measure CC, which has very reasonable distance and separation requirements from sensitive uses like schools and residential zones. On the Planning Commission, we had a vote to try to amend those restrictions, and I did not vote to amend it, because I want to respect the will of the people. So right now, what we have is, we have a total of six that are allowed in the city. There are none proposed in District Two, just FYI. So, so I think that process should stand. I don't think we had a very robust evaluation process, however, and that's what has created all the lawsuits and the problems, in my opinion. So I think that we should look at really sticking to what the criteria were in the process, and maybe even eventually redoing the process, to make sure that it was fair and just process. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, let's move to mental health. And this is, I think, just one question on mental health. Are you familiar with NAMI? NAMI? They didn't say what that means, so...
National Alliance for Mental Illness.
Okay. National Alliance of Mental Illness. Are you familiar with it? And we'll start with Tricia.
I will confess, I don't know what direction to take this question in, but yes, I am familiar with that organization. And I think a quick personal story, that, you know, I, I have members of my family who have suffered from mental illness, and it has been incredibly empowering to understand the benefit that mental health care professionals can provide to, to everybody. And so I certainly am somebody who has benefited from a very wonderful therapist, and I encourage everybody to do that. But yes, I do think that we have, this is something that should be talked about, that I am very happy and proud to admit, that I have experience with in my own family, because I think it's something that we need to make sure is not stigmatized.
Thank you. Kevin?
I'm not familiar with it all, but I'd, I'd be more than happy to see any afterwards. And if you wanted to give me some information, I'd look into it. And probably after tonight, I probably might need it.
Okay. Felicia?
Sure. So I am familiar with NAMI. They do an annual walk every year, that I, I think I did one time with a friend of mine who's very involved in NAMI. But I think this, this points out just our difficult mental health system here in the state of California. And we need to put more funding into it. We need to, what I also didn't realize, when I was walking the district, there are a lot of board and care facilities that are closing, and they are group homes. We have quite a few of them in District Two, and a lot of them you wouldn't even notice. But these are facilities where people can live at a very reasonable rate, and a lot of them are closing, because they can't afford to stay open, because the reimbursement rates are not, are not up to par by the state and the county. So this really points to our entire system, and how we can make it better. And I think that does feed into some of our other problems, and how we can prevent things like, like acute homelessness, and people who are chronically homeless. Thank you.
Beau, you have a comment on NAMI?
I am now. I wasn't before. But I, I would, I would love to read more up on it, and support it. I mean, every, I, I share an office. My colleague Monica is here. She's a counselor at GUSD. And I see the tremendous level of value that she brings to the district, with mental health counseling to our homeless and foster youth children. So I, I live it every day. I, I have family that might have mental illness, but they're not diagnosed specifically, per se. But I definitely would like to read more up and support this organization, if I could.
Thank you. Let's move to what will be our last written question, before we have our closing statements from the candidates. This question, it's a general, it's about general issues, but what issues are the most pressing in Pasadena? And how do you propose to resolve them in District Two? So what issues are the most pressing in Pasadena? And how do you propose to resolve them in District Two? And we'll begin with Kevin.
Okay. So this is what I think, and this is what I'm being told, as I walk the district. First is public safety. Second is doing business in Pasadena. And third, we've already touched upon, are the schools. And as I've already mentioned before, I, I have met with Steve Mermel, the city manager. I've talked to him about the, the public safety part of this. I've yet to meet with the chief, but it, it's on my thing, a list of things to do. I want to work with that staff, to, to try to help address those issues on, on making it either a better, robust system, or, or at least touting the successes or failures. And then the next, on the, on the, on the business part of it, and small business of that part, that's something that I want to work on, too, with, with Paul in the chamber, to try to figure out how we can alleviate that. And I think we've already addressed the, the schools earlier.
Thank you. Felicia?
Sure. I think, based on my walk, it's housing affordability, homelessness, and the environment. And what's interesting is, what I heard on my walk, is that people are very upset about the new development, that's very big and out of character with the city, yet people are concerned that their kids can't live here. So that tells me something very interesting. It's not that we necessarily hate new development, we're not NIMBYs, we just are not getting the type of development that's actually helping out the city. So I want to focus on affordable housing, preserving what we have, trying to keep people in place, stop the hemorrhaging of families leaving the PUSD district. I want to focus on community, on development that actually provides community benefits for homelessness. I'd like to focus on the funding of mental health and substance abuse, through Measure H and Proposition 63. And on the environment, I have a long history on the environment, but mostly, I'd like to do some community solar projects, to help with our local generation, and create good local jobs, and also create a, a solid waste processing facility with Burbank and Glendale, so that we can actually recycle our goods, and not send them to another country, or throw them away.
Thank you. Mr. Potatian?
Yeah. The truth is, we, in the second district, are blessed. We have an embarrassment of riches, in the sense that we are the most secure or safe district in, in the city. We have a burgeoning business sector, or a corridor. Again, thank you, Paul, and thank you, Margaret, for developing that. But Paul also sounded the alarm in a couple, a few weeks ago, in the sense that we have businesses that are closing day and night, here in the city. And we need to do whatever we can, and as your council member, I will do whatever I can, within my power, to make sure that we keep those businesses open. You know, secure, my, my campaign platform is very easy to remember, as far as priorities are concerned. It's safer, and it's secure streets, accessible government, financial security, education equity, and fiscal, and revitalize neighborhoods. It's a, it's one thing to, it's one thing to have safe and secure streets, but it's a, it's another thing to where, when you don't support your, your local businesses, and they don't stay open, then crime will eventually follow. So definitely go out to East Washington Village, do commerce there, support your local businesses. We're safe as it is, so safe, you know, I, I believe in empowering our law enforcement, so that they can do 24, 21st century policing with 21st century technology, but let's support our businesses.
Tricia?
So I think housing affordability, solving homelessness, and you're really helping to create healthy, walkable neighborhoods. Housing affordability, obviously, we've talked a lot about tonight, and one of the, one of the ways to do that is to focus on removing obstacles to building housing that, that is affordable to all income levels. Homelessness, we have to solve it, we have to solve it, we have to solve it, and prevention is key to that process. Creating healthy and walkable neighborhoods is something that encompasses a lot of things that we could do, from very small things, like more street trees, so it's really pleasant to walk around your neighborhood, especially in the middle of the summer, to revitalizing our commercial areas, so that you have somewhere to walk to. And I think, you know, East Washington Village is a great example. There are a lot of people who live near there, but we need more businesses, and we need to revitalize that area, in order to make that something that, that people will frequent as residents of District Two. And I think in all, in the context of all of that, re-establishing Pasadena as the innovative thinker and leader, to accomplish those goals, and to solve our municipal problems.
Thank you, Ms. Keen. So now, we will have our closing statements by the candidates, and we will do this in reverse order to the opening statements. So we will begin with Tricia Keen.
So this election just feels critical. From the White House to City Hall, we are now facing generation-defining decisions about the future of our country, and the future of our city. We've heard tonight a lot about issues that affect District Two, issues that affect the city of Pasadena, and issues that affect the entire region where we live. And we have a choice. We have a choice to focus on smart progress, to solve homelessness, to make housing affordable again, and to reinforce Pasadena's role as a leader in innovative solutions that are facing our cities. I am dedicated to being your voice on city council, to fight for an innovative Pasadena, one that solves problems, rather than ignores them. So my name is Tricia Keen, and I'm asking to be your choice for District Two's council member. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
On my, okay. Thank you, once again, to the organizers of this event. Thank you, Margaret. Thank you, League of Women Voters. It was an incredible opportunity to spend some time with the voters, and share our ideas on how we can make Pasadena better, particularly District Two. I want to acknowledge Margot Morales, who is here. Margot does all the grunt work, all the day-to-day stuff here in our district. And partially why I want to bring Margot up is, I come from the legislative, from the legislature, and I realize and understand how important constituent services are. And given the opportunity to represent you in District Two as your council member, I promise you that you will always have access to me. My campaign... My campaign manager thought it would be a great idea for me to get a burner phone, but I'm not gonna get a burner phone. You will always have direct access to me. My number is 626-818-9004. My private email is TrojanOne@Hotmail.com. And if you, I invite you to learn more about my campaign at BeauForPasadena.com, and I respectfully and humbly ask for your vote on March the 3rd.
Thank you. Felicia Williams.
Sure. My name is Felicia Williams. I've spent the last eight years involved in the community, deeply involved in the community, listening to community groups and members, and also walking the district so that I could hear directly from you. I have the experience in finance and public policy to turn your concerns, your ideas, into action. I can hit the ground running. The day after the election, I'm developing my 100-day plan right now. And, and I will focus on the little things that we talked about. And each of those items that I mentioned before, we've started working on them, I will continue to work on them. What I plan to do, if I get elected as city council, I will have weekly office hours at Lavender and Honey or at Jameson Brown. We all have to have coffee, so come and see me from 9:00 to 11:00 a.m., and we'll support our small businesses. I want to do a town hall meeting on topics that are coming before they get to the city council, not after they get to the city council, so I know how to vote for you. And then I would also like to have an annual block party that includes community service at our local schools. And I will walk the district every year. I had a lot of fun meeting you. I see so many familiar faces, and I can't wait to see you again. And I honor, just, I, I really ask for your vote as city council member. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Littman. Mr. Littman.
I, I thank a lot of folks, and I thank everybody that came out tonight, but I, I think I forgot to thank my fellow candidates. I mean, it started out, there was only one person, and now there's four of us, and I think that was great, and I'm glad that my neighbors have jumped into this. I also want to say that I've already started fighting for the city as a commissioner here in this, in, in the city of Pasadena. I fought off legislation AB 516, which would, would allow cars to stay anywhere they wanted without towing. I've also fought as a state commissioner for champion of women's rights. When I started on the commission, there was only men on the commission. I was able, as a chair, to bring in three women, and as I stepped down as chair, I was able to get a female elected as the chair for the first time in the history of that commission. I'm Kevin Littman, and I'm asking for your vote come March 3rd. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Now, let's give all of the candidates a round of applause for their participation this I would like to thank you for taking the time to be a part of this forum. The League of Women Voters, we hope that we have succeeded in helping you be better informed about the choices in this election. But now, we have to turn things over to you. It is now your turn to do the involved part, all right? We say that we like to inform and involve. So this is now time for you to do your part, participate in our democracy by casting your vote in the March primary, and urge your friends, your family, anyone and everyone to be registered and to get out to vote, because we need every vote in this election. Remember, the world is run by people who show up. And I want to thank you again for showing up tonight. I would ask Councilwoman, does Councilwoman McAlston have any final remarks? Oh, she does. Okay, hang on. All right.
Well, first of all, I want to thank you all for attending. This is, the attendance has been fabulous. I'm, I'm so pleased. It's bigger than the mayoral, than the mayoral forums, so I'm very proud of that. I'm proud that you guys are so excited about getting a good elected representative. I would like to ask one more time for you to show your appreciation. This is not easy, okay? It's not easy to run for city council. It's not easy to go to panels and forums and questionnaires and endorsement meetings. It's very difficult, and then there's the work, if, if you are elected, you know, of doing the work. So let's thank them one more time. Okay, since I have so many people here, I just have to make a really quick pitch for the census, okay? You'll be getting a postcard in the mail soon about the census. It's very, very important to us as a city that you complete your census card, fill it out. This is where a lot of federal money that the city gets is tied to the census, and we have a lot of people who are afraid, you know, afraid of, of the government, afraid of the federal government, and afraid to fill out those forms. But it's very, very important for Pasadena, so please pay attention as the 2020 census effort starts to get underway. And I have nothing else, so I want to thank you all one more time for coming, and good night.
Good job. (applause)[1789.62]